I would like to call to order the Pascal County Board of Commissioners 10 o'clock meeting of March 21st, 2023. At this time, silence all electronic devices and mute your microphones. Please rise for invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Oh merciful Creator, Your hand is open wide to satisfy the needs of every living creature. Make us thankful for Your loving providence and grant that we, remembering the account that we must one day give, may be faithful stewards of Your good gifts. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
District One, Commissioner Oakley.
Here.
District Two, Commissioner Waitman.
He was going to go virtually, is he on?
He's on.
I see him on.
He's there.
President.
District Three, Commissioner Starkey.
Here.
District Four, Commissioner Bradford.
Here.
District Five, Chairman Mariano.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, before we start, Commissioner Waitman, you want to state your reasons for appearing virtually?
Yes, I didn't want to share the stomach flu with my distinguished colleagues.
And I assume that based on your procedural rules, that is a, that's a reason that he can, he can, yeah, having trouble talking this morning. That's a reason that he can attend virtually, that's one that's provided for in your, in your rules, and I assume the board has no objection to that.
None at all.
He can vote also?
Yes, he can vote.
Okay.
This will mean that we'll roll call votes for all of those.
There you go.
Right.
Thank you.
Now, Commissioner Waitman, I hope you feel better, but I appreciate your staying home. It's a very good thing to do to keep us all safe.
You're welcome.
Now is the time for public comment. Citizens are given an opportunity to comment on any current or future agenda item coming before the board and on any other business under the board's purview. Today's public comment will be handled as follows. First, we will take public comment from those who are here in person. Then we will take a public comment from those who are pre-registered for WebEx and currently on the queue. We request, when you address the board, comments are not directed personally against a commissioner or team member, but rather directed at the issues. This provides mutual respect between the board members and the public. After stating your name and address for the clerk, a three-minute timer will be activated. After two minutes, a single beep will indicate you have one minute left. When your time is up, two beeps will sound, and you should close your comments. WebEx participants will be disconnected automatically when their time is up. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
Yes, we have three presidents who have signed up for public comment, and I will call them, name and address for the record, and then you may begin.
Morning.
Good morning.
Walter McBride, 10210 Miracle Lane, Newport Richie. I made some notes here so that I didn't forget any of the points that I wanted to make. Basically, I'm reaching out to see what we can do, what you all can do, to improve the lifestyle of our county. As you know, the world, the U.S., Florida is changing. People are moving. People are gravitating. People are moving from California, from South Florida, from New York, to various places. Florida is one of the number-one destinations. Tampa and its surrounding areas is the number-one destination in Florida, okay? I don't see our group doing anything productive to entice and draw high-end people to our community. I see building, I see businesses going up that consist mostly of car washes, Dunkin' Donuts, tattoo parlors, anything that's kind of a non-high-income-producing business. Now, this was fine in the past when Pasco was a different county than it is today, but when we have people moving from up north, from California, from South Florida, they can afford to pay cash for $600, $800,000 homes and up. They're professional people. They're CPAs, they're financial people, they're medical people. Those people are not going to be happy, and I know because many of them are my neighbors who have expressed this. To go out into a community consists of storage facilities and car washes. They want high-end restaurants, they want high-end businesses, and before you say, well, this community won't support it, I say prunes. High-end businesses are successful not because of their location. I've been around this world too many times, all over the world, all over the United States, and I will tell you factually, that businesses, high-end businesses are successful because of the service they provide and the quality of the product they provide, not where they're located. In fact, most of the high-end successful businesses, not most of, but many of the high-end successful businesses that I've encountered around the country and the world are not in high-rent places. So the fact that Pasco is not a currently high-end place is not an excuse to not try to draw that type of crowd here. And, and we're going to keep not attracting those types of people, and they're going to continue to gripe and continue to move. All of my medical people don't live in Pasco. They live somewhere else. That's a telling sign. And I want to know what you all plan on doing to move us forward instead of regressing.
Generally speaking, we do not respond to public comment, but I'll just say a couple of things real quick for you. Have you heard of Moffett?
Yeah, one business.
That's going to bring about 15,000 jobs and a whole lot of supporting businesses all around it. We're also looking on a coastline to go clean out the canals up and down, to make it better for waterways up and down. I mean, sir, if you want to sit down and be happy to talk with you after the things we've done.
I've left messages, but they don't get returned, so I don't know what else to do.
We're going to cut public, your three minutes are up. Anything else?
Yeah, I appreciate your input. If you'd continue.
We're done.
And if you'll, if you'll leave contact information, I want to fill you in on a lot of things, too, because what you're saying is...
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We'll just give you a little help.
Good morning. Alan Rose, 10221 Hilltop Drive, Newport Richie, Florida. Today, I'm just following through on things that I've mentioned before, and I want to bring it to your attention, so you have this information, because I know there's pushback, and, and some people don't know how to go after the sources. The funding of our waterways restoration, it's very important to attach certain areas to certain funding strands, like Coastal Barrier Resource Act and others, to State Beaches Inlets and Ports Program. Once complete with this, there are other funding strands available, but for right now, this is what I, I know, and I know you can attach to. The CBRA is funded at $2 billion annually for our section in the United States, and you have to file under this one, under Exceptions and Exemptions, because if you initially read that, your people are going to say, we're not eligible. You have to go through, through like page six, and you'll find where we're eligible is under the Exceptions and Exemptions, and we're also listed in another location as an otherwise protected area. You have to know this in order to talk to the people properly and get your funding. The areas that would be funded would be areas like Anklod Island, the sandbar loss and the subsea structure caused loss of the sandbar. We lost some subsea structure over hurricane, and we've lost our, some other piece of the sandbar. Dirney Key extended southeast towards Green Key to help restore our longshore drift and fight the red tide. Rose Island, and I've gained some of these islands because they're part of what I presented before. You can put whatever names you want on them. But Rose Island to help restore our longshore drift, protect Salt Springs State Park, and protect our coastal communities. Fisherman's Island, restore a longshore drift and improve waterways from flow into Hudson Creek, in the Hudson Canals. And then Sun West Island, restoring our longshore drift and protecting our coastal communities up in that area. Then, now you go down to the states, state funding, because that is offshore, and you can connect that with the federal funding. The state funding is under the Beaches Inlets and Ports Program. That's funded at $15 million annually for the state. Get a piece of it. It's would fund areas like Key Vista, Gulf Harbors, North and South Channels. It will give you better water quality for all. Green Key, restore Big Bayou, Cross Bayou, Oyster Creek, create a one-mile beach to the north side, and a parking area for at least 200 vehicles. Restore waterways of the Coty River, Port Ritchie Channel, Waterfront Park, Sims Park, Nix Park, and Miller's Bayou. Go to Leader, Leisure, Lighter Bayou, Bear Creek, and Leisure Beach. Then you go up to Hudson Beach, and this is the state funding part. And then you go further north, you go into Seapines, Sun West, and Arepica. There's a difference between your offshore break and your inshore. Offshore is going to go federal, inshore is going to go state, and your people just have to go after it. It's there. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And Pastor Troy Peterson.
Good morning. May I receive a file?
Move to receive.
Motion second. All the favor say aye?
Aye.
Actually, roll call vote?
District One, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District Two, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District Three, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District Four, Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
District Five, Chairman Mariano.
Aye.
Sorry about that, commissioners. Chair, commissioners, staff, thank you for your time. For thousands of years, priests, high priests, have worked with governing authorities to bring the wisdom of God to rule our counties, our states. In God we trust, the United States of America. I was in a prayer meeting this morning, just praying on what the Lord would want me to share with you this morning, and He gave me Haggai, Chapter 1. I've been studying this chapter for several years. "See Zerubbabel, the governor, and Joshua, the, the high priest, with the remnant of all the people, obeyed the voice of the Lord, their God, and the words of Haggai, the prophet, as the Lord God had sent him." So for a year and a half, God has sent me to come encourage you commissioners, because I had a dream, I had a word of knowledge, that if you commissioners would honor the King of Kings, Lord of Lords, in the invocation, the beginning of these meetings, that God would bless Pasco County. And so I know you guys want God to bless Pasco County, and so that's why I'm here, is to pray and encourage you guys. I had the opportunity to, to see Commissioner Moore in Tallahassee a couple times these last couple weeks. We've been going to Tallahassee and standing with our governor, and I was reminded of a, a comment he made to me after I spoke last year, and he said, we can't just have one church come in and lead in the invocation. Well, that's a misunderstanding. What I'm talking about is somebody cares. The same organizations that does all these outreaches, that leads in the invocation on the National Day of Prayer, having them leaders, you adopt them leaders, them pastors, as chaplains for you commissioners, just like we're chaplains in the city of Port Ritchie, just like we're chaplains with the Sheriff Department. Being your chaplain puts it on us so that we can lead in the invocation. We're not praying a prayer of repetition, but we're praying specifically for the wisdom of God so that you can make the decisions on the problems that you commissioners face. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
That's all I have, that's signed up in person.
Okay. I see three gentlemen from the Rotary Club that are here. Before we do the consent agenda, I'd like to bring them up. I think they want to make a presentation, so I know they're important businessmen, so let's bring them all up.
Mr. Chair, just for the record, there's no one on WebEx on public comment.
Okay, so this will be the last part of public comment.
You may want to generally ask if there's anybody who hasn't signed up after, after you get through.
Okay, after you get through, okay.
Chris Casella, 5603 War Admiral Drive, Wesley Chapel. I want to thank the Chair, Chair Mariano, and the rest of the Board of County Commissioners for allowing us to come here today. We are part of Rotary International, Rotary District 6950, which covers four counties here in Pasco County, Pinellas, Sanando, and Citrus Counties. We have over 1,800 members. You'll be happy to hear, a third of those members are here in Pasco County. 67 years ago, our first club in Pasco County started here in Zephyr Hills, and since then, we've had a great relationship with the Board of County Commissioners. I think this is the first time in recent history that we've come to thank you for your support. Troy Stevenson, who's right here, brought to our attention right after the Hurricane Ian supply drive, that, you know, your support means a lot. So we all agreed, we said, you know, let's, let's recognize them, whether it's recognizing veterans in Newport Richie, remembering 9/11 in Wesley Chapel, or allowing us to partner with the first universally-inclusive playground in Pasco County, or collecting food for the Pasco County Animal Services. You've been there, and you've included us, which we're really grateful for. With that, we'll also be there in the future. We've just recently revamped our disaster recovery, disaster response teams in Pasco and all of the four counties. Just to give you an, a insight on that, down in southwest Florida, the Rotary Clubs down there, they mucking gutted 300 homes. That's 300 residents in that area, in the affected area. It's about $20,000 for each home. That's a $6 million impact that they made on these families, and those are volunteers. They did that for free. So again, your support has meant a lot, and we'd just like to thank you by presenting plaques to you. And Derek, you can read those?
Yep. I will say there's, there's a lot of people that come up here and comment and talk about problems that we have in the county, and there are those problems, but there's also a lot of good. And we see a lot of good in the public officers that do the hard work and try to solve those problems every day. In recognition of that, we have plaques for you, and it says, "In recognition of our continued support of, of your continued support of our community, our citizens, and the Rotary Clubs of Pasco County, you exemplify our motto, 'Service Above Self.'" And so we'd like to present you these plaques.
Move to receive.
Second.
You're not going to put them in the record.
Oh.
Hang on for just a second.
Move to take the plaque.
We're going to come, we'll come, hang on for a second. We're going to, we're going to come down and take a picture, but I want to, I want to do something for you guys, too, that we actually did a little bit ago, but we're going to read it to you as well. So if you would just hang on for a second.
Oh, wow.
Jack, I want to thank you for telling me it was going to be 11 o'clock and then pulling me up early. We almost forgot your plaque.
Oh, wow.
Hopefully, we don't have to take them or vote rights.
There you go. Thank you.
It can also be a weapon.
Yeah, just stay there for a second. We're going to read the resolution real quick, and then we'll come down to a picture altogether. So we could, Madam Clerk, I know we've already read this resolution, but just so they can hear it in person.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Resolution number 23-085, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, proclaiming the month of March to be designated National Procurement Month. That's not the right one. I'm like, nope. All right, I only have this version of it that's framed. We'll try again. All right, resolution number 23-029, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, recognizing Rotary District, hey, this is the right one, 6950, and Pasco County residents for providing assistance to the citizens of Lee County, Florida, in the aftermath of Hurricane Ian. Whereas on September 28th, 2022, Hurricane Ian made landfall in our state, causing severe destruction and devastation throughout Florida. And whereas Hurricane Ian made landfall as a Category 4 hurricane, and was the deadliest hurricane to strike the state of Florida since the 19, since the 1935 Labor Day hurricane. And whereas, upon learning of the needs of Lee County citizens, Pasco County residents immediately responded. And whereas Rotary District 6950 and other Pasco County volunteers accepted donations of needed supplies, including equipment, food, and water. And whereas Moss Nissan opened up their Bay Area locations to accept donations for 49 clubs of Rotary District 6950 volunteers. Volunteers filled four 26-foot box trucks with collected donations and delivered them to the residents of Lee County in the days following the storm. And whereas Rotary District 6950 delivered supplies to the Pasco Sheriff's Deployable Emergency Response Teams stationed in both Fort Myers and Bonita Springs. And whereas Rotary District 6950 also raised nearly $85,000 for additional hurricane relief efforts in Lee County. And whereas private citizens, including Alex Hamilton, Alana Crumley, Allison Crumley, Leah Crumley, Sean Houseman, Lori Zeller, and Olivia Crumley, volunteered to aid in relief efforts. And whereas volunteers partnered together to aid in cleanup efforts, including debris removal, sewage cleanup, and more. And whereas Lee County continues to rely on the support of our dedicated volunteers to recover and rebuild. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said board hereby recognizes Rotary District 6950, Alex Hamilton, Alana Crumley, Allison Crumley, Leah Crumley, Sean Houseman, Lori Zeller, and Olivia Crumley for their dedicated work in providing relief to the citizens of Lee County, Florida, done and resolved in regular session with a quorum present and voting on the sixth day of December 2022.
Now, we've already voted, we already voted on this and approved it, so we don't have to do that.
Oh, okay.
That'll save us 10 minutes. But I do want to say, the Rotary Club International 6950 was phenomenal in all, in all the work you did for people, even after the fact, as far as... even after the fact, as far as restoring all those homes. To see everybody coming together, gathering supplies, putting together, and then making the trek down to Fort Myers all the way through. And I will tell you personally, for me, going down, there was just an extra benefit for me to actually see it. I've seen hurricane situations before, but this one here is so fresh, so strong, right down the street. And to see our Sheriff's Department, how they were deployed out and around, how they brought us out to the island, and just watching the devastation that just, just had happened, and what those people had to go through was, was really something. And from that, Andy Fawcett is actually going to give a presentation later today, all about resiliency, what we can do around here to protect ourselves, or if we do get this event, if it does ever come our way, what can we do to better prevent, prevent the destruction that they felt, and make sure we take the proper actions as well. So I want to say, thank you guys for your dedication, your leadership. You know, you really love the Rotary motto, so we greatly appreciate you. Commissioner Bradford?
Every time I've picked up the phone and called Chris, or Troy, or everybody who's standing there, it has been a joy. And I won't be long-winded, because I try not to be long-winded, but they walk the walk, and they talk the talk. After we took care of the hurricane, everybody knows I love dogs. So hey, I got some needs, I called Troy. I got dog food showing up at car dealerships. I got dog food showing up, you know, animal services. And it was, it's just a great thing to see when people come around common ideas. And it's positive. We have a great community. And I think the more we stick together, the more we work together, the better it is for everybody. Thank you, sir.
Agreed. Okay. All right. Shall we go down and take a picture?
Yeah.
Bring the plaques in.
Take our, take our.
Okay, move to RS1? Oh. Is there anyone else from public comment that would like to speak that didn't get the opportunity yet? We'll close public comment. We'll go to RS1?
All right, is anyone here for Fix a Leak Week? All right. Please come to the podium. Thank you. I'll go ahead and read the resolution. Resolution number 23-086, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, declaring the week of March 20th through March 26, 2023, as National Fix a Leak Week in Pasco County. Whereas yearly household water leaks across the United States accounts for roughly 1 trillion gallons of water wasted. And the average American household leaks can account for more than 10,000 gallons of water wasted every year. Whereas, and whereas, 10% of American homes have water leaks that waste 90 gallons of water or more per day. And the average family can waste 180 gallons of water per week, for, or more than 93,000, I'm sorry, 9,300 gallons of water annually from the household leaks. And whereas fixing household water leaks can save homeowners about 10% on their water bills, because the average family spends approximately $1,300 per year in water cost. And whereas the Environmental Protection Agency, EPA, Water Sense Program was created in 2006 to urge Americans to become more aware of their impact on water conservation. And whereas the Pasco County Utilities Department is partnering with the EPA's Water Sense Program to celebrate Fix a Leak Week as an integral measure to support water conservation for Pasco County. And whereas Fix a Leak Week teaches Pasco County residents about how to fix common leaks in our homes and yards, and seeks to change the public's perception of water usage and highlight the dangers of leaving leaks unattended. And whereas supporting the 3rd week of March as Fix a Leak Week reinforces the ongoing call to Pasco County citizens to conserve water resources by using them responsibly and efficiently. And whereas the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners supports and encourages water conservation measures throughout Pasco County. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said board hereby declares the week of March 20th through March 26, 2023, as Fix a Leak Week in Pasco County, and calls upon each citizen of Pasco County to fix and, to find and fix leaks to protect our water conservation efforts to save energy and help reduce our carbon footprint. Done and resolved in regular session with a quorum present and voting this 21st day of March, 2023.
Move, Pro.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Actually, roll call vote?
Yes. District, District 1, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District 2, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District 3, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District 4, Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
District 5, Chairman Mariano.
Aye.
So Commissioner Waitman, this was your item? Would you like to address?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, thank you guys for coming. You know, water is an incredible, incredibly important resource in Florida and throughout Tampa Bay. So any, any way that we can support leaks and folks getting water star and being efficient with, with their water usage in total support, and grateful for you all to be here today and, and recognizing how, you know, even fixing small leaks, how, how the gallons add up. Thank, thank you all.
Commissioner Starkey?
Yeah, so I have two houses in my district, and I'm usually at my Gulf Harbor's house. I shouldn't say that online, huh? People come rob me. So in one of my houses, I didn't realize it in the back area where I don't go where my kid, my mom used to live. And, and we didn't realize it, but the toilet was left. You know, the, the handle was stuck. I don't know for how many weeks that was stuck. But $800 water bill, I went looking for sources and found that one. And my sprinkler, it seems like when lightning gets close to us, it does something to the computer on my sprinkler system. It was going three times a week. So, yeah. This is meant for me, National Water Leak Day. So I'm glad you're here, and I'm glad we're talking about it.
Commissioner Bradford?
We're going to rename it to Save Our, Save My Checkbook Week.
Yeah, exactly.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yep. I thank you all for what you do to conserve water in Pasco County. Being the Chair of Tampa Bay Water, yesterday we went through the same issues in saving water and how much it does save in the long run, several thousands of gallons throughout our region. So what we can do in Pasco to do our part is, is welcome. So, but thank you for all you do in this. And conserving water means a lot, because water's a very precious item and getting more precious as we go forward. So, thank you.
Very good. And Madam Clerk?
Yes, so like Commissioner Starkey, I, we found two leaks in our sprinkler system in our house. And my husband fixed those this weekend. So I'm excited to see what the impact's going to look like on my checkbook next month. But we are helping to preserve the carbon footprint, right?
And I was a victim as well. My sprinkler had to get knocked off the side and was slowly, slowly leaking, but that leak added up.
Yeah.
But no, I appreciate you bringing this forward. Commissioner Waitman, is a, is a big item. And I think this, one of the things that maybe I'll just mention, the Toilet Rebate Program. We started about 16, 17 years ago. I know we first started with residential, but that's going for commercial work as well, right? Have we thought, have we done a, maybe thought about doing like a letter to all the people that maybe haven't changed out yet? Like all the businesses especially, that maybe might look at doing a conversion?
Good morning. For the record, I'm Sandra Anderson of the Pasco County Utilities, and I'm the Director for Customer Information and Services. So the Toilet Rebate Program is part of a larger rebate program we have going on. But yes, we do everything from direct emailing, text messages, phone calls. We do in our newsletters, as well as some regional. We're part of the member Bay, Tampa Bay Water. It's a regional-wide program that offers the rebate, rebates program. So we do advertise through there. But we can look at, and Phoenix is our Water Conservation Coordinator, and we're, that's something that we can look at. We haven't done a direct mail, if it makes sense for those that are eligible. What we often will do, we proactively even look for the higher water users. And we directly reach out to them to, to talk about their water use and to help them look for leaks as well. But it's definitely something we can look at doing.
And Sandra, I want to thank you for all the great leadership you've shown over the years. Years ago, we did have some trouble with high water bills, et cetera. And your response to every, every person I've ever brought to you has always been in a very positive way. So I appreciate you, Phoenix, David, for the great work you guys do. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. We've got a great team.
Yes, you do. Going to take a picture?
Yep.
Can everybody slide this way, just a hair? Keep sliding, keep going.
We need to turn sideways.
Perfect. Here we go.
And look at me? Thank you.
Okay, RS2?
Okay. I know there's two individuals here from Toastmasters. If there's anyone else, please step forward. I'll go ahead and read the resolution. Resolution number 23-087, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, celebrating the 50th anniversary of the West Pasco Toastmasters Club of Toastmasters International. Whereas Toastmasters International, founded in 1924, is a nonprofit organization teaching public speaking and leadership skills to individuals. And through a worldwide network of clubs, has over 280,000 members with over 14,000 clubs and is found, and is found in 144 countries. And whereas Toastmasters International originated as a program for young men to practice, to practice public speaking at their local YMCA. And over the last 100 years, Toastmasters has grown to be one of the largest public speaking-focused organizations in the world. And whereas Toastmasters International members offer support and guidance to people wanting to improve their public speaking skills and become more confident speakers, communicators, and leaders. Members take on specific roles within their club at each meeting, such as all counter? Is that right? Okay. All counter, timer, and grammarian. Members give a series of both organized and impromptu speeches and receive feedback on their speeches from other members. And whereas Toastmasters International also hosts the World Championship of Public Speaking, one of the largest speech contests in the world, which has grown to over 5,000 participants in 149 countries. And whereas the Pasco, the West Pasco Toastmasters Club, number 2824, was started in 1973 and has assisted the citizens of Pasco County in learning and improving the skills necessary for public speaking and impromptu speeches for various leadership roles. And whereas, the West Pasco Toastmasters Club is there for anyone in Pasco County who wants to become a better public speaker, as it is the easiest and most encouraging place to immediately get free practice, coaching, stage time, and feedback. And whereas for 50 years, the West Pasco Toastmasters Club, number 2824, has continuously served the citizens of Pasco County by teaching and enhancing self-confidence, personal strength, leadership abilities, and one's own integrity. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said board hereby congratulates the West Pasco Toastmasters Club on its 50th anniversary. Done and resolved in regular session with a quorum present and voting this 21st day of March, 2023.
So move. Second?
Second.
And roll call vote, please.
District 1, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District 2, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District 3, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District 4, Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
District 5, Chairman Mariano.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradford?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. 50 years is quite the accomplishment. Anything that a politician might say up here, I think you probably could help refine that, called lessons. So we really appreciate that. So what would you like to say? The floor is yours. I'd rather have you say something than us try to say something about Toastmasters. We do this for a living. I thought I was good. I'm not good. Go ahead.
Well, I'm still a work in progress. But my name is Barbara D. Simone, 10409 Pioneer's Drive, Newport Ritchie. Toastmasters, the thing I like about it is it provides a very safe atmosphere to work on your public speaking skills. You know, there's no judgment. Everybody's very supportive. And, you know, it's just a great atmosphere. As a result, several of our current and former members have either gotten promotions or better jobs because of their work with Toastmasters. And we're really proud of that. We, we really encourage that. And actually, when I was, when I worked here many years ago, I helped start the, the County Employees' Chapter of Toastmasters. And I really appreciate the commissioner's support over these years. Thank you. And thanks for the resolution.
Anybody else?
So I'm the current president of West Pasco. So thank you for having us today. This is a big deal for the 50th anniversary, the years that we've put together. We meet at, every Tuesday, we've met for 50 years, every Tuesday. We've had members of 40 or more at times, and we've had members of seven or more. But everybody knows, well, not that everybody knows, but 99% of the people have a fear of public speaking. We count your ahs, your ums, that's what an all-counter does. So when you're speaking, like everybody has today, I've been back there counting. But that's one of the things the club does for everybody, is makes you a better speaker inside the club, so you speak better outside the club. We appreciate that today, the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Starkey?
So, in, um, I just said.
Mark her down.
I, I majored in tier design at FSU, and we had to give presentations. So those are the first times I really had to publicly speak. And it was so hard. I had such anxiety. And then I ran for office and had to publicly speak. My heart probably is going to explode out of my chest. I mean, I, I've gotten better at it now. I'm not as nervous. But I can tell you, that was one of, if someone said, "What's your biggest fear?", it'd probably be jumping out of airplane or public speaking. I put them right there, next to each other. So I really appreciate that we have a Toastmasters here. I've had friends who've gone through, and I think it's a wonderful organization, really. So we're glad that you're here. It's good seeing you, Barbara.
Where is, Commissioner Oakley?
I appreciate knowing that you do what you do, because I kind of was looking for a place to help me out sometimes. And then I got, someone told me I was a bad speaker. And then the next person, I went and asked the guy, I says, "I need to find a place where I can learn how to speak better." And so he says, "What do you mean?" I said, "Well, this one guy said I, I didn't speak very well." And he said, "You, you better leave it alone." He says, "Because out of seven people that'll speak at some function somewhere, you're the only one that'll..." the only one that I believe." And he said, "Don't change a thing." I haven't, so that's why I have trouble over and out now. But do y'all have a membership other than just West Pasco?
Absolutely, yes, we do.
You do?
Yeah.
In Pasco on the east side, or?
We have Wesley Chapel, Zephyr Hills, pretty much every county has a club. We go on to Hernando, Pinellas, all around.
Right. I just never knew about it, so I would have been in contact during that one time, so probably still need to come.
Well, congratulations on fifty years. Will, should we go down? Commissioner Bradford.
So, I want to get this straight. You're going to help me be more persuasive. I don't have to do it in the sunshine, law, and you're going to give me the skill package so when I go into Mike Carbella's office, the county administrator, he's going to see the wisdom of my, of my ways and give me everything I want.
Absolutely.
Perfect. Let's take a picture.
Sign two of us up.
We can do all of that and more.
All right, here we go.
Then everyone look at me. Thank you.
Now, we're going to do RS three, but we didn't get the PO done in time, so we're going to continue that two weeks. Just kidding, just kidding. All right, RS three. Those for the procurement, please come forward.
Yes.
No, we did do the resolution for this one.
Mike Carbella put me after that, just so you know.
That's pretty funny.
All right, I'll go ahead and I'll read the resolution first, okay? Resolution number twenty-three dash zero-eight-five, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, proclaiming the month of March to be designated National Procurement Month, whereas the public procurement profession plays a significant role in the efficiency and effectiveness of both government and business. And whereas in the addition, in addition to the purchase of goods and services, procurement adds value to the organization by performing such functions such as executing, implementing, administering contracts, developing strategic procurement strategies, and cultivating work relationships with suppliers and other departments within the county. And whereas public procurement professionals at the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners and in other public and private organizations have tremendous influence on the economic conditions in the United States with billions of dollars of cumulative purchasing power. And whereas the Purchasing Department of Pasco County Board of County Commissioners is committed to provide, committed to providing high caliber strategic logistical and operational support to all departments within the county. And whereas the Purchasing Department at the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners recognizes, supports, and practices the public procurement values and guiding principles of accountability, ethics, impartiality, professionalism, service, and transparency established by the Institute of Public Procurement as fundamental tenants of the public purchasing profession. And whereas the Institute for Public Procurement was proclaimed, was proclaimed the month of March as National Procurement Month to further expand awareness of the procurement professional's role in governmental officials and the public, the business, and corporate leaders. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said board hereby designates the month of March as National Procurement Month, denun resolved in regular session with a quorum present and voting this twenty-first day of March, two thousand and twenty-three.
Move, approve.
Second.
And a roll call vote?
District one, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District two, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District three, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District four, Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
District five, Chairman Mariano.
Aye. Okay. Well, we're very happy to have you all here. I want to say that the job you have done for the county has been phenomenal. The agendas we have seem to turn over real quick. The importance of what you do is, can't be highly stated enough. When we turn paperwork into you guys to go through the procurement process, the turnover is critical for so many projects to get done over and over again. But with the efficiency you guys are doing the job and the effectiveness, the accuracy has been phenomenal. And even when we have tough situations, your team has done a phenomenal job with us. So we greatly appreciate you. Commissioner Oakley?
Yeah, I certainly appreciate what you do and, and the way you do it, because I think it was last year or something that, something came up and it wasn't quite right or it didn't seem right. So, but after questioning and actually talking to y'all about those issues, and you're explaining what you have to go through and itemize each and every step that you have to go through to get a project for the procurement, I mean, it's fantastic. You're very much deserving of the award and having this time represent what y'all do, because it's a very, very important part of Pasco County and what we do. And the better you are, the better we are. So it makes us be a premier county, love it closer, because of your efforts. Thank you.
Commissioner Bradford?
I've been in office for a few months. I have to admit that I was frustrated, because I didn't know what you did. So first of all, thank you for the education. I'm no longer frustrated. I understand the system. There's always a system in place. I can't look at my legislative aid and go, "Well, I can, but don't want to. Here's a hundred bucks, go buy me a chair," or something like that, usually. So anyway, I do appreciate everything that you do. I finally got some smiles out of the back, because if you don't smile, Toastmasters is coming back and put you up front, so you can talk. There we go. So anyway, thank you so much, and if I can ever be of service, don't hesitate to call. Thank you.
Mr. Starkey?
And I would, I would just echo my commissioners. It's, I don't think people realize how important your office is. So we're very appreciative of the work that you do, and to have it running so efficiently is great for the county, so thank you very much.
Mr. Carbella, our local comedian, did you want to add anything to that?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. No, I would like to say that, you know, the work that the purchasing department does, we always like to say, "You help us color within the lines." And while sometimes the act of government procurement may seem a little, little more difficult than just picking up your credit card to go do things, there is, there are laws that we have to comply with for using public funds in a responsible manner. So thank you for the hard work that you do. It's tough being the regulator out there, I know, but we do appreciate you and the team and everything that you do for us. Thank you.
Would you like to add a few things?
Yes, we would just like to say, oh, Carrie Roberts, purchasing director. We'd just like to say thank you for your support, and just recognize the team. They work tirelessly, they work late, they work early, they work through the storms, and they make sure everything gets done, and we can't do it without them. So thank you to them, and thank you for us, for you all to recognize us.
All right, thank you. Because there's so many, I'm just going to go down and maybe have you stand behind and take a picture. Okay.
Oh, yeah, did you saw that? The battle? I'm drinking it through the top. We needed like a face thing up, Commissioner Waitman. Want to make like those face things way to us when we're not here?
Here we go. Got it.
Everyone's going to look at me? Thank you.
Congratulations. Okay, now it's time for the consent agenda. I have three items to be pulled, discussed. First one, C-ten, C-twenty-three, and C-thirty-seven. Are there any other items to be pulled from the consent agenda? Hearing none, we have a motion?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Roll call vote, sorry.
Aye.
District one, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District two, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District three, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District four, Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
District five, Chairman Mariano.
Aye. Okay, so first item we have up is C-ten?
Morning, Mr. Chairman and Board members. David Engel, Economic Growth Director. I'm here to answer any questions or have a discussion about this item.
Okay, Commissioner Waitman?
Thank you, thank you, Chairman. Yeah, I pulled this item, you know, the Rupert Deale, previous board approved it, and great, great project for our county, but there was a condition in there that dealt with having a segment of the Old Pasco Road being built prior to issuing COs. But since we're going to change this condition, I just wanted to go on record, I told Mr. Carbal about this, about having a strong traffic management plan. That way we can avoid, try to avoid any, any accidents or potential accidents as we, as we move forward on this project until we get Old Pasco Road widening done. So that's the main reason why I pulled it, is to have the board support and staff support on, on making sure that this project moves forward in a safe manner.
And if I may, Mr. Chair, I appreciate Commissioner Waitman's concerns and the public's concerns over safety during construction, and our engineering services team does take safety seriously. It's top job, number one. I have spoken with the county engineer and the project manager to ensure that once we have the contractor on board, that we need to discuss safety, and even if it costs a little bit more or takes a little bit more time, that we're ensuring that the job is done safely and within best practices for maintenance of traffic and safety to the public and the construction crews.
Okay. All right. Your pleasure, Mr. Waitman?
Move, approve.
Second.
And roll call vote?
District one, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District two, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District three, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District four, Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
District five, Chairman Mariano.
Aye.
Thank you.
And I pulled C-twenty-three. For a good reason, I think it's a great project for us. Hudson Beach has struggled a lot with pollution source tracking up and down as far as what's causing it. They've, Niflarses, they've replaced all the pipes, so it couldn't be that. We have shrimp boats down the end. We see sewage, we see oil sheen, all sorts of things that just kind of like shouldn't be there. So I'm very happy DEP has been working with us to try to get this project done and coming forward with it. I will tell you, Colleen Weaver was very dedicated in tracking this down, looking at this every step of the way through, so I'm very excited about this project, which I think will help, and this may be something we can look at for down the road for even other parts of the county canal system. Mr. Starkey?
Yeah, I was going to pull it, then I saw it on here, and in my meetings with Mr. Carbella yesterday, he knows I was going to bring this up. So I think it's really important to fix the issues that are up there, but I personally think we should be testing the whole coast, and so I don't want to interrupt this at all, but just wanted to bring up the fact that I don't think, know if we sample anywhere coastline, except when, except near that beach, and maybe Green Key, I don't know. So I think it would be smart for us to see what's going on along our coastline. And I've mentioned this before, to have a comprehensive plan for the whole coast. I'm glad we're talking about dredging, but you know, we want to, we want to maximize the opportunities we have on the coast and make sure we're taking care of our coast. So those are my thoughts.
You know, Commissioner Starkey, one of the things of the living seawalls that the people from Miami that brought the technology over from the Netherlands, they actually have monitoring systems in all the seawalls. So my thought is, when we do baffle boxes, alighted traps, whatever it be, on these canals going up and down, that we put that living seawall to the back end of every wall, we can have a monitoring system there as well, that we can just have it instantaneously get that information, keep an eye on it as it goes. So that's something we can incorporate down the road as well.
Commissioner Oakley has his hand.
Commissioner Oakley?
I'm in agreement also that we need to make sure that coast is cleaned up and environmentally it's, it's safe for everyone, and it's a good, healthy, growing coast that we all enjoy. So it's a plus-plus for our county to, to keep that kind of material out of, out of other areas in the coast. So I'm very much favor of doing the best we can for all that.
Commissioner Bradford?
I'd like to echo those comments. I think the coast of Pasco County is an area that I call it the untapped gem of Pasco County. That's the first thing. And Mr. Chair, you were mentioning monitoring with the state of Florida be involved in any of that monitoring in addition to the county?
I think so. Matter of fact, we might even get some federal help. There's a lot of federal money out there for restoration of canals, et cetera, so I think we can tap into that, and for the monitoring part, I think DEP nationally as well as statewide would be very, very interested in helping us.
And, but the operational control would be Pasco County?
I think it would be Pasco County, yeah.
Thank you, sir.
So move to approve C-twenty-three?
Second.
And roll call vote?
District one, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District two, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District three, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District four, Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
District five, Chairman Mariano.
Aye. Okay. And C-thirty-seven, Marcie?
Morning, Commissioners. For the record, Marcie Yesberg, Director of Community Development. Three hundred and eighty-eight units, affordable housing units for seniors at the anchor of Gulf Harbors. This is a pull and revise. The Commission District was incorrect. It is not Commission Three, it's Commission Five.
Okay. Move, approve.
Wholehearted second.
Okay. Roll call vote, please?
District one, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District two, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District three, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District four, Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
District five, Chairman Mariano.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. It'd be a great project for our seniors. And I'll go to the regular agenda, starting with R-forty, and it's presentation only. Andy Fossa?
Good morning, Commissioners. Andy Fossa, EM Director for the County. Couple of weeks ago, I had the pleasure of taking Commissioner Mariano and some county employees around the county, showing them the impacts of what hap, what would have happened if Ian had impacted our coast. So basically, what we did was we took Ian from Lee County, put it on the same course, same speed, same trajectory, and inlaid the surge that would have happened in Pasco County. The results are astronomical and devastating. So I put together a slide presentation that I had presented to the Commissioner, and since then, I've tweaked it a little bit just to get some more realism to it. So category four hurricane, north by northwest trajectory, speed of ten miles an hour, landfall, peak high tide, center of storm striking just near Gulf Harbors. Impact assumptions, storm surge would be greater than twenty feet above ground level, and that means sea level, ground level. Extensive flooding west of Little Road, devastated flooding along US-nineteenth Corridor, massive property damage loss, loss of life, damage to critical infrastructure, a significant loss of tax revenue, and serious environmental damage. So the hurricane storm surge, if you can click on that video. This is basically Fort Myers Beach when Ian came in, started to come in on the coast. This surge came in six hours prior to the eye coming across the county.
This video was amazing.
Yeah.
It is. I want you to keep focus on the red house that's back in that left-hand corner. Now, the waves that are hitting that Now, the waves that are hitting that camera was a beach camera that was out there, placed by Lee County for their safety and security. That camera was mounted a little over eight feet in the air, above the ground. And if you notice, that house back there is now floating house and leaving. So if you watch the palms, they'll start to turn here in a minute, which means the winds are now blowing offshore and taking that water back out.
And people stayed in their houses during this?
Yes. I've met a couple of folks that actually, one stayed in a mobile home and weathered the storm out, and she had four and a half feet water in her mobile home. Her husband's a quadriplegic, and they didn't take the storm that serious. So she physically had to hold him up above the water line until that water receded. And then they finally got some help in there for her.
And would she stay again?
Yes.
She said she would stay if another storm came? Wow.
It was very mixed emotions on this storm when you were down there interviewing the people and talking with them. So that's basically the... Can you click on the slide again? All right, so the storm surge, flooding feet above ground level, represented by the white flags, massive coastal flooding along the US-19 corridor from Arapica to Anklot. If you'll notice on there, there are some areas that reach 21 feet in wave, in surge height. That's not including the wave action on top of the surge. So the damage would be astronomical. Northwest Pasco, from Arapica to Bayanup Point, flooding average about 14 feet, over 21 feet in some areas. Bayanup Point Hospital would be impacted by flooding of 17 feet. Bayanup Point Hospital is elevated about 15 feet above ground level, if you ever noticed the hospital. So they would have water on their first floor. They do have a plan that they don't evacuate out, they evacuate up. But with a storm like this, and we have talked with them, that the recommendation would to be evacuate out, because it's the sheer wind force that would be behind that storm. Marina impacts, that slide, the picture on the left is a marina in Port Ritchie on Sunset Lane. The picture on the right, it's what's left of a marina in Lee County by Fort Myers Beach. Western Pasco County, Bayanup Point to Elfers, North Bay Hospital would have water through their first floor. So they would have to evacuate. Flooding average of 15 feet, and then in some areas of 21 feet. And you can see the inlay, how far deep that water goes in, especially down by where that says Morton Plant, North Bay Hospital, that far in, and have 21 feet in certain areas. Waterway impacts, the picture on the left is Floramar Terrace, we were at, when we went out there to look. The picture to the right is one of the canals down in Fort Myers Beach. Western Pasco to South County, Elfers and County Line, flooding on average of 18 feet, 21 feet in some areas, flooding from coast to Little Road. Six foot to eight foot of flooding around Little Road. And those are some pictures that we have locally, south of Little Road, that we, on an average, bad rain, we just get those street flooding. And that's some of the flooding concerns that we have. Homes and businesses, this is along Fort Myers going out, that was an intersection right there, that we had set up some generators and comfort stations, bathroom showers, laundry facilities. But that's one of the newer homes on the left, that was built to category to a hurricane stray storm. So you see the devastation that this can do.
Don't, can you go back on that picture? So, I mean, that turquoise building, it's still, you know, why is it still standing pretty well?
It's cement.
Cement?
It's cement. So that building is cement, that was a bunch of beach stores, beachfront stores, got blown out, they had water through the second level, but the bottom floor was completely cleared out. I had a picture I wanted to put on there of a 7-Eleven, because the only thing that's standing at the 7-Eleven is the four columns and the 7-Eleven sign. The entire walls and infrastructure had been blown out of the building.
So on that, on that house on the left, is that bottom floor wood?
Yes, that is a wood construction house.
And that's built to hurricane codes with the first floor wood?
Yes, yes ma'am, it was. It had blowout walls, the blowout walls did as it was supposed to do, but then right behind it, the sheer amount of wind, just once that wind gets into the structure, just destroys and tears it apart. I have pictures of cement structures on a hurricane code that show the same kind of devastation. And it was kind of unique, because you could drive down the street, and you have all these destroyed homes, and you have this one home that has maybe a shingle off of it. And that was it. Just depends on the construction and who built the house.
The quality of the contractor?
Yes, ma'am. Critical assets, so pump stations, power plants, electric substations, water treatment plants, communication, emergency services. Anticipated impacts would be long-term disruption of service and loss of generated revenue. When I was in Lee County, the barrier islands were the worst hit when it came to infrastructure. They lost sewage, they lost water, and they lost all communications. I was there three weeks, and when I was leaving there, they still did not have water, sewage, or communications. On Fort Myers Beach, it was the same way, the infrastructure was all torn out. They lost generators for pump stations and all sorts of assets.
Andy, if you would say it, no, you're on the right, you're going right where I want to go, go ahead.
Electrical power plant, we have the Anklot Power Plant that's located down in Anklot. That would get about 20 feet of water into it. We spoke with them, right across the street is a main electrical grid that they have for distribution of power, for the Holiday Side, for Elfers, and all that area, and into Pinellas County. If that plant was to be destroyed, we, that would be a major disruption of service for not weeks, but probably months, to get power up.
So on that power plant, isn't that only used for mostly backup generate, power generation?
Mm-mm, that's a functioning power plant.
Well, I know it's functioning, but I'm pretty sure it's just a backup.
Is it a peaker?
It's a peaker.
Yes. Yes.
No, and just to talk to that for just a moment, there are opportunities, I think, there to raise up that structure. Talking with the manager?
Huh?
Talking with the manager of the plant, he can actually come out to speak to us. We looked at the grid system that's out there, and they would love to get it raised up at some point. And I think if we talk about resiliency going down the road, it's something that we can go look at and try to work with them. I think we get the Pinellas delegation to go with us to go fight to make that plant safer.
Yes, sir. Electrical power distribution, power poles, Lee County, the islands, they were down for miles. But I will say, I have never seen a group of power workers, electrical workers, reconstruct a power pole line that was about 10 miles long, and they had it up and reconstructed it within three days. But they had no power to put to it, but they had it all up and ready to go for the infrastructure.
So can I ask you a question on that? So my brother lived through Andrew, Hurricane Andrew, and a lot of my family, and Miami-Dade put the power poles underground. And most of the county, all these are underground now. So are they planning on doing that as well?
I would hope so. I don't know what the future...
It bothers me that we don't do that here.
A lot of it, I think, because you hit some areas, like I was on Pine Island, you had some areas, areas on Pond Island, that had electrical underground, and then you had stretches that were above ground. So it was a combination of both.
That city that Sid Kitson built in Babcock Ranch, I can't remember the name of it.
Lakewood Ranch?
Huh?
Lakewood Ranch?
No, no. Is it Babcock Ranch?
It's Babcock Ranch.
All their wires are underground, and they have solar, and they didn't lose any power.
Emergency services, that's Fire Station 31 on Fort Myers Beach. That's what's left of it. There's another picture of another fire station that I have, that, you know how big a fire truck is, and you know how much a fire truck weighs. I've never seen a fire truck picked up and floated into the back of a building with the way that surge came in. But impacts for us would be Station 10 in Hudson, Port Ritchie Station 1, Port Ritchie Police Department, Station 11 in Port Ritchie, Station 19 in Newport Ritchie, County, Newport Ritchie Station 1, Newport Ritchie PD, and Station 12 in Holiday. So in essence, we would lose all our fire stations on the west side of the county, along the US-19 corridor. Of course, they would evacuate and move, but the facilities would be damaged.
I would do want to say Fire Station 3 over at Majestic. It looks like Eric and I were out there looking at it, and Mike was there too. They've elevated that thing way up. I'm looking at the fill just from what we were out there, the piles we saw, that's probably up like six, seven feet from where I was.
So hospitals that would be impacted, like I said, we would lose Bayanup, which is a very key hospital in Pasco County. It's a Level 2 trauma center, it's a 320-bed facility. Like I said, they would have water through their first floor. North Bay, 141-bed facility, it's an acute care facility, they would have water up to their first floor, and up and higher. For those facilities, we would lose. Tax revenue, so if we had flooding on the west side of US-19, just in storm surge alone with flooding, we would lose approximately $37.9 million annually in revenue loss for the county. And that's broken down, general fund, fire, millage, go bond, storm parcels, taxable values, and then our loss of revenue to the general fund, fire, go bonds, and storm work. If the water was actually to go across to Little Road, which is projected in areas, the additional $109 million a year in tax loss, in revenue loss, we would have to the county. And as you see, it'd be taxable value, general fund, the fire, millage, go bonds, about 10 million, loss of revenue, and the revenue funds, about 78 million, fire, 18 million, the go bonds, 2.8 million, and storm work would be 8.96. So that would give you a total of about $139 million in loss, that would affect the county and our budgets. Environmental impact, when you're talking about cleaning up the coast, when I was down there in Lee County, there was so much debris, the county couldn't even fathom how they were going to get all this debris out of the water. Not only the boats, but the cars that were in there, there were buildings in there, a part of houses in there, there was garbage in there. When I left there after three weeks, they hadn't even thought about starting that process yet. When I left there today, I was leaving, I was part of a task force for derelict vessels and vehicles on the coastal way, to get them figured out, but they never touched the garbage. They hadn't even spoke about garbage yet, and the effects that it has on the mangroves and the citizens, and the fish, and the environment.
And one of the things, Colleen was at a seminar, and she talked about, was the fiberglass insulation that got blown out into the mangroves. I mean, that's going to be brutal for the fish. So that's something, that's something we can actually look at implementing ourselves for a code, not to allow blown insulation in, it's got to be packaged better.
So my last picture is, I just put this one in there because the picture on the left is the Sanibel Lighthouse, missing its third leg, fourth leg, and then the picture to the right is our Anklot Lighthouse. So that could happen to our lighthouse too, that's also a historic structure.
Same architect, maybe. That's interesting. Ours looks just like theirs.
It is, it is. So with that, do I have any questions from anybody?
Commissioner Bradford.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Years past, I was FEMA certified. It's so old that the certificate is actually paper turning brown. So I took that out and said, okay, that's old technology. But the water's still the same, the storm surge is still the same. What has changed is the intensity of the chemicals that we use, the way we have constructed our coastal communities, the way we have clustered some appropriately, some not appropriately, how we've built our public safety infrastructure. Some of it was done before we even got here. So my point is this, if something like this hit, and God forbid it never does, but if it did, I have no doubt that everybody in this government will take off the suit and tie and whatever, and do what we have to do. We saw that all over the state of Florida and all the different types of hurricanes. But more importantly, I did want to point out private industry, how those linemen, line ladies, line people, you're right, they got it done, they got it done quick. So what lessons do we learn there, apply to the public sector? Because I know the public sector will have bigger problems, more expensive problems, but I think, I think there could be lessons learned there. And are we doing enough to educate the public, Mr. Chair, on something of this nature? Thank you.
Thank you. Well, Andy, I'd say it was, it was an awesome presentation you put before from just a conversation about getting, talk about what would happen to our key infrastructure pieces. I think it's super informative and important for us to know what those effects would have been. Something we didn't, we talked a little bit in our meeting, was as far as the effect of wells and septic systems in the Lee County area. Matter of fact, Manatee County too. With the, all that water that went in there, it polluted wells, hurt septic systems for weeks, I guess, for people not being able to get in. It's something we need to go look at. And I think we all would say that after meeting with Commissioner of Agriculture Simpson, that there's a lot of septic disuasion money that's out there. There's federal help, as well as the state help that's out there, and it's something that, Mike was, we put on a grants administrator. This should be probably the priority one to get forward. If there's opportunities to help the power plant down the street, we definitely want to do that. And I think we should probably take a closer look to see if there's any legislation still out there. But when someone takes a house and raises it up to base flood elevation numbers, that there was a bill last year for that extra value of that property was not going to be taxed.
That's still in legislation, in fact.
Still going?
Yeah. My group, my team is the one, we do acquisition elevations, we do acquisition and demolition for repetitive flood loss. We have one going right now on Deedra Circle that we elevated the house, I believe it was 15 feet. So they're in the middle of doing that. And it's a grant program, state pays, state and FEMA pays 75%, the homeowner's got to come up with a matching 25%, but it's well, well worth it.
Mr. Chair.
Only because our D E O keeps 25%, unlike other states. So if we could ever get that changed, we could give 100% to the homeowner.
That would be set for that too. Commissioner Bradford.
Are we part of that lobbying process to get those bills through?
Yes. We have, the Florida Emergency Preparedness Association, FIPA, has a very strong voice within state government. And they do a lot of lobbying on behalf of the counties. And then we also turn around, we present letters to our senators, to our congressmen in order to push these bills through. And then we have certain bills that, of course, we do not want to push through, that's going to be more harm than good. But yeah, there's a very big voice up at the state level.
And do you need a letter from us in support, or do you feel you already have it?
So I would actually work with Ralph Lehrer on that, run it through him. I don't know if he's here or not.
He is.
There he is.
Ralph, would you come forward? Well, just with legislature in session right now, if it's out there floating, if I'm going to do it, we want to probably do it quickly.
You do it now.
Would you recommend that we write a letter supporting?
At this point in time, no, it's not necessary, maybe after session, because there's nothing working right now.
Nothing working now? Okay. Very good. Well, again, Andy, thank you for your great work you've done, the great team you've got doing the research.
Oh, I've got one more.
Mr. Starkey?
I think this just shows again why the wastewater treatment facility on the water north of Gulf Harbors needs to move. It needs to be off the water, and more inland, so.
And we are working to that, but I think we, I'm glad we have the conversation right here, because I think... And we are working to that, but I think we, I'm glad we have the conversation right here because I think we definitely need to do that. Location's bad and they've got some issues that we're dealing with and.
Yeah.
That would be an expensive project.
It is, but I'll tell you what.
But there's money out there to help.
There's a lot of money out there to move plants like that. Up in.
What it takes.
Up in DC, exactly. But they have put that money out there and the money's been allocated already. So I'd say number two, if not number one, that plan two should be something we work with the grants administrator.
It's not on here as a little star.
If I could add to the conversation, you know, we are undergoing a, I'm sorry, undertaking a vulnerability assessment currently. And so that involves the cities, it involves the counties and looking at those critical pieces of infrastructure that are vulnerable. That kind of helps set the stage for us to help chase after larger dollars. Obviously, there's things already in place that we're taking, you know, taking into consideration. I mean, at the end of the day, you know, Andy and I, you know, we talk about this. I mean, protection of your critical infrastructure is probably super important because we can have great building codes, but Mother Nature can always out-design us on any kind of storm. And so it turns into a recovery operation and how quickly that the county can bounce back, hence resiliency and why you're seeing a lot of, a lot more focus and importance on that, especially with regards to infrastructure. And we're moving, you know, as a county government with grants and resiliency, we are forging ahead in this area because it's important.
Okay, Commissioner Starkey.
So Tampa General has this wall that comes up that surrounds it. And I wonder if that's not something that Bayonet Point, that might be good for Bayonet Point.
Bayonet Point's not as bad as North Bay.
Okay, well, one of them.
Yeah. So North Bay, if anybody, because North Bay, number one, is right on the river. It's right by the river, number two. It's ground level, it's not elevated whatsoever.
Actually, it's not a wall that comes up. It's a wall they put in place that locks together.
Yes, it's a flood wall, exactly what we're talking about.
And keeps the flood in the building?
Yes.
It's very, it's new technology. I didn't believe it until I actually saw it.
How long has it been in?
It's, I think it's been around probably within the last three to five years they have had this product. But it actually does a very good job.
Yeah. Sounds good.
Commissioner Waitman?
No comments, just appreciate the report.
Okay. Again, Andy, thank you very much, greatly appreciate it.
Not a problem, sir. Thank you, you all have a great day.
Thank you.
That's a pretty nice backyard.
Okay, now we'll go to miscellaneous business. Vice Chairman Oakley?
All right. We just, I don't have, I didn't put any pictures in to show where we'd been, but we all went to, we had a great trip there in Tallahassee and Pasco County Legislative Day. We held meetings with Representative Brad Jaeger, Representative Jeff Hockem, Commissioner Wilton Simpson, Senator Hooper, Representative Steele, and members of the Pasco County Legislative Delegation. So it was a good meeting and I think we've got to handle a lot of things while we were up there. Some a little different than I've seen in the past, so very interesting meeting. So next item I have is I recently added a member to my team, Lori Bowman. Joined us as an executive assistant, which Marie continues as my legislative assistant. We decided to have Lori on our team and she's already doing some great jobs we have for her there in office, so. One thing we found out that she did, because we moved her over in a lateral move so quickly, she or someone forgot to set up the meeting for the agenda review with Mr. Cabala and myself. So I blamed it on her yesterday.
What'd you get for poaching, sir?
So I get what I asked for, so. But anyway, that's basically, that's all I had. I appreciate everything staff's doing. I continue to try to work with them to make things better here in the county, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Waitman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, just to echo Commissioner Oakley, we had a fantastic Pasco day up in Tallahassee and appreciate Representative Maggard's time. Gave us about 30 minutes and Representative Jaeger. And appreciated the time they spent with us and want to thank Ralph and the team and Mr. Cabala and his team and the reception that we had afterwards was really nice and got to mix and mingle with the Greater Pasco Chamber of Commerce. So all in all, it was a good day, very good day. Next, just to get Texas Board's temperature on Friday, we had a transportation management area group meeting. And there's probably going to be a conversation around a regional MPO. So before that meeting, I figured there might be some board members who wanted to share some thoughts and opinions on that particular issue.
Yeah, I'm happy to. And I would encourage everyone to talk to our MPO director. But I'm in favor of coming together regionally to work on regional solutions to transit. And I think it's really important, as our 54-quarter fills in, it's just going to get more and more crowded, that we have a regional solution. And this is how Orlando came together and got all that federal money. And other areas around the country have done it. I think the devil's in the detail because we want to be sure we're not a little fish in a big pond. We want to continue to represent our county proportionately. And I don't think anyone in another county is going to care. I mean, we need to control how we do the local things here. But we need to speak with one voice on transit in the area. So I don't really know how it works, but I figure there's a solution to every problem. And since the solution was not T-Barda, we need to keep finding that solution. And so I'm looking forward to this conversation to see how we can move forward and try and speak with one voice to help our constituents. You know, it's not, it's not for us today, but it's for our population in 10, 20 years. And if we don't start doing something now, we are really doing a disservice to the community. So I'm looking forward to the discussion and see how we move forward. Again, we got to take care of our local stuff, but we also have a responsibility for the regional solution. So that's how I feel.
Commissioner Bradford.
I'd like to echo those comments too. You know, transportation is such a critical area. Without transportation, we cannot have jobs. Without transportation, public safety is an issue. We could go through the whole list. Thinking regionally and going after the money, I've, from day one, I've been a strong advocate of lobbying. And we need to continue those efforts and if we can play a bigger role in it, then we should all do that.
Very good. Commissioner Oakley?
I'll just add to that. Being together is much better than trying to stay alone on some of this. But regionally, we really need to do the right thing and regionally speak with one voice for our area. Because really, in fact, the transit that would help us would also help Hillsborough and Pinellas Counties at the same time. So I think we need to pay attention to it and be a part of it.
And I'll agree with the dialogue as well. You know, Miami-Dade, Orange County, we had a whole bunch of money from the feds that was going to go to us and it ended up going to Carolina before. And then after that, it went to California. So by not having one voice strong is important. Now, I will tell you, Hillsborough County is going to be the key piece. They've got the core infrastructure of that rail line that runs right up that not only goes north-south, but also runs east-west all the way to St. Pete from USF. So they've got to get into the game. Now, the new elections, I think we might have a better thing. I'm excited to see what's going to happen Friday. But as I said, when I asked for Commissioner Waitman and Bradford to be on that TMA, we've been talking about this transit for seven, eight years. We had CSX at the table to work with us. Even up in DC, they said unless you get the rail line onboard with you, it's tough to get anything done. It may take some federal legislation. But I think if you guys are in the room, if you can't make it, great. Commissioner Waitman, if you're not going to make it, I'm going to be there anyway, but one of us will have full representatives there.
And it's here. It's here. Starkey TLC.
So we need to make sure we have three of us there and I'll be a backup for you two guys in case something happens where you can't make it or you get a little sicker or whatever may happen. So we'll have hopefully the three of us there. But I think it's a very important dialogue to go. And I think, Commissioner Starkey, as you mentioned, the population, as we increase, et cetera, I want to make sure we're not that little fish either. And I think we're going to take a good portion of the growth, not all of it. But we should be focusing more on not just population, but land masses well and in future growth coming up.
You know, a thought is, you know, if there was a metric of how many people are doing a 20-mile commute, we'd probably win. You know, it's an interesting way to look at, look at it.
I think it's a great way to go. I mean, right now, the TMA for the past seven years, every time we've had votes and gone forward, it's been a very good group. I think we've looked for the region every step of the way. And, you know, I think it says a lot to the previous meeting last year when we had two Pinellas County representatives make a motion and second the 41 interchange overpass to get done and funded as a top priority project. So that tells you the group respects what we're doing. And if we all work together, we can make some things happen. But Commissioner Oakley, just as you say, that one voice, one bay, as they call it, is definitely the mantra we need to go after if we're going to get the big federal money.
Yep. I think I'm chair of that.
Well, thank you, thank you.
I think I wasn't there and they made me chair. I think that's what happened.
Yeah.
I missed it.
Guilty as charged. Commissioner Waitman, anything else?
Thank you. Just one last thing. I want to thank Keith Wiley and Park Staff. As of Friday, the Universal Playground is fixed and everything is up to date and mended and just appreciate Park Staff getting on it and getting that park back in game shape. So thank you.
That's all? Okay.
That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Starkey.
Well, I also want to thank everyone who traveled to Tallahassee and we had a great meeting with most of our legislators. I called the ones I missed because just couldn't hit them all. But I think it was a very successful trip. But I really want to shout out to, is it, you say Commissioner Simpson? Is that the right word?
Yeah, Commissioner Simpson.
Commissioner Simpson because he just gave us so much information that we're going to be able to move forward on. And that was probably the most productive meeting I've ever had with him, I think. So I'm really excited about that meeting and what it means for us.
I know, Catherine, that Ed Blumel was here earlier. He is now a representative for Wilton Simpson.
Oh, he's working with, oh, and he left before.
He's gone, he had to go to Hernando, but.
Okay.
Yeah, I found out this morning, I didn't realize that.
Yeah, so I saw him sitting here.
He's representing for Wilton Simpson there.
Well, that's great. So I look forward to continue to work on the information Wilton gave us. And I do want to say, I was a little disappointed to hear about commissioners being added to a two-term requirement.
Eight-year term, yeah.
Yeah, eight-year requirement because I think Florida will really be at a disadvantage. You know, you hear it all the time, even our legislators, that eight years is too little, 12 years, yeah. But eight years, you're just learning the ropes and really starting to get effective. I can say that there's no way that, I'm putting together a national Zoom call with Congresswoman Virginia Fox's staff. She's the Chair of Workforce and Education in the US Congress. And we're going to work on fixing problems with the Workforce Innovation Act, WIOA. And counties in Florida send back millions of dollars every year because we can't figure out how to use it effectively. It's very hard to use and that's really frustrating when you can't use the money like you'd like. So there's no way I could have had that kind of opportunity as a five-year commissioner. I mean, it takes a while to get to that level. And soon, Commissioner Truax is going to be running for NACO's second vice president. So in two years, he will be President of NACO. He wouldn't have been able to do that. We wouldn't have had him walking into the White House or walking, you know, being at the table with our leaders up in Washington and around the country. And so I think it's, I think it's, I wish it was three terms and not two. I don't have a problem with term limits.
Five years would be much better for everybody.
Yeah, so I just wanted to say that. So last night, I want to thank everyone who came to the international trade and tourism event. You know, we had the Belizean contingent here in February because that was originally our date to celebrate this and they had already booked their tickets. So we did that, we did that, you know, here at the commission. But our big kind of get-together was yesterday and I think it was a big success. I know I talked to some of our international business people who were there. And actually, there was a lot of business going down there last night, a lot of networking. So I got a number of compliments and I thought it turned out very well. Adam said something very interesting last night, that 2% of our visitors are international. And I remember when I started working so hard in the manufacturing arena and my husband was a two-year Chair of PEDC at that time and he said, "Why do you care so much about manufacturing? It's only 4% of Pasco County jobs." I said, "And therein is the problem." Because those are great jobs and they don't move. And I'd love to know what percentage of our jobs are now with manufacturing. But so not only do we have a great opportunity, I think, to help our local businesses learn how to import, export, and put their footprint on a bigger global experience, but we have the opportunity to increase our tourism internationally. And I know Adam was just in Germany and I meant to ask him how that went. But so just thank you to everyone who came and I hope you had a good time. And I want to grow that event next year into something even bigger and better. So I think that's all I have.
Okay. Commissioner Bradford.
I want to start with, it's not on my miscellaneous business, but apologize for not being able to make Tallahassee, Mr. Chair. However, I was hot on the phone calling Representative Jaeger, Senator Hooper, and others. Yeah, I was tracking you. Did they have a meeting? Yeah, okay, where are they at now? So we had good discussions. You guys did a great job. Also reached out to Representative Maggard, spoke with him. I think, and I want to say this appropriately, we can have disagreements. We all are going to have disagreements. But if we, there's 10 things on the agenda, 10 things on the item. If we can agree on eight or six or seven, let's move those forward. Then we'll worry about the rest next time. That's the mindset that we have to have as we deal with the different levels of elected officials from our level all the way up to the federal level. I think that's a no-brainer. So I apologize for not being there. So let me take it back to the local level. Got some pictures. March the 11th and 12th. There we go. We cleaned, we collected 112 tons from the sites of Wind Dixie and Moon Lake Park. That is the weight, the increase is the weight of roughly of 28 of my F-154 pickup trucks.
I think that might be a record. I think that might be the most I've ever heard.
It is?
I think.
It is?
Not that it's a contest I want to be in.
Not that I keep track of those numbers, but it's an all-time Ghostbusters. I did want to publicly acknowledge the great team that was out there, our county employees from Public Works, Solid Waste, Code Compliance, county staff, local volunteers that coordinated there. My, had the fortunate, my wife Deborah, she was out there helping feed the county employees. We fed everybody. Nobody went hungry, I was told. And I was going back and forth between several of the two locations. I did want to thank Commissioner Mariano. He's always been very, very supportive and I asked him to come by and to show support. He was there and I appreciate that. He was also with county employees. Come to find out, one of the county's employees I did not know happens to be a friend of his and they play golf together. And I asked him, I said, "Does a commissioner cheat?" And I asked him, I said, "Does the commissioner cheat?" He would answer the question, so. So anyway, that was a very, very good time to keep it local. And it's important that we don't forget where we came from. The second thing that I'm proud of is I completed a training course from the Florida Institute of Government, and that was part of my appointment for the canvassing board. Canvassing board, some people know, but basically, the canvassing board is you are the impartial judge that does not get involved in politics. You are prohibited. You can't talk about it. I can't be involved in fundraisers. I can't even, I can't even have lunch and talk to a school board candidate, or a commission candidate, or mosquito control board. I am absolutely prohibitive, 100% from getting involved in that, which I think might be a blessing. So thank you for that.
Raider, you always say that.
I'm pretty sure it's a blessing. So got the certificate. We're all set there. The third one is, yesterday, we went over to the Area Agency on Aging for our monthly meeting. You know, seniors, seniors is a big part of our challenge here in Pasco. But when I go over there, the one thing that always sticks in my mind when I come home is seniors is the fastest-growing sub-sevent of homelessness. They're too proud to ask for help. They're scared. They lose their house. They end up living in a car. And that's sobering. And we have to do, we have to do a better job at doing that. And I know it requires money. And I know that everybody is dedicated to that. But I want to try to keep that on the radar screen. So that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thank you very much. And it was a great day out there at Moon Lake. And those who have been out to Moon Lake, the community has really cleaned up so much. Like Gulf Island, same type of thing. The community's gotten better and better every year. So even though we've gone back there a few times, it's been well worth it, I think. And with the numbers you have this year, it's even better.
Keep bringing those Ford pickup trucks, guys.
All right. Commissioner Starkey?
Well, I just wanted to go back to the comments that the gentleman made earlier this morning and have a discussion about that. Because, you know, and I hear it all the time. And I just, you know, we have our Citizens Academy, but it would be, I wish there was some way we could educate our folks more. Because, you know, you mentioned that about car washes. Hey, and I used to say this to my husband too, before I, you know, got into the job I'm in now. Why are they building another 7-Eleven when there's one right across the street, you know? Or, but these car washes, we can't control the market that way, right? It's the zoning, and then the market dictates what goes in there. And I get frustrated driving down State Road 54 and seeing all the fast food. And that our highway is lined with fast food establishments, and it's fast food with a driveway all around, fast food, parking, driveway all around. I don't like the development pattern we have either. But it's really, really hard to change that. And I think when we do our comp plan revision, that will help. We do our form-based code stuff, that might help. But I know, and I'm sure you do too, I work very hard to try and bring higher-end restaurants here. And restaurants that we see in South Tampa, or Dunedin, or Pinellas County, I know that's the number-one wish of people up here, is that we had more opportunity. But you know, when I, when I talk to the owners of Columbia Restaurant, or some of the other places, it's going to sound crazy, but a lot of them say, "We don't have the density that will support those restaurants." And so, you know, I keep plugging away at it. I will say, we just had a couple restaurants open up. We had Cantina Viaro opened up at Trinity Town Center, or Tuscan Center. In downtown Newport-Ritchie, Estuary just opened up, fabulous gastropub restaurant. And I think today, we're going to be approving a project, hopefully, on State Road 54. I think we've got some great opportunity there. And, you know, when I, when I meet with developers and their representatives, whenever we have the opportunity, and I always have Terry in the meetings with me, but I always say, "Are you building a place that you would want to go to on a Saturday night with your friends or your family?" Because that's what we need here. We've got enough of the fast food, you know, not, they're not "eat-ertainments," as Commissioner Waitman would say. But I think it's really important for us to make sure that as developments come in, we try as much as we can to help them be the highest quality that we can. And, but, so to hear that gentleman say this morning that we're not, you know, focused on being premier, that's not true. We're working very hard on that. And I'm really excited. I was just looking at, I dropped a pin on US-19, and I was looking at it visually, and I, oh my gosh, it's looking so much better. And I can tell you, I have three businesses who have remodeled, taken down the old signs, putting in new landscaping in just the last two months on the southern part of US-19. And there's more to come. David Engel maybe will share some stuff in a couple meetings. But there are changes coming, and it takes a little while. But we are working hard to make this a premier county.
And Commissioner Starkey, believe me, I think what we've done has been great for improving jobs. I mean, we're one of the first counties to actually put money in a government tax, sales tax, to go get economic development. We improved it even this year. We've, I think, made that statement. And not so much that money's going to make the difference, it's come or not, but it sets an attitude of like, this commission wants jobs here. And everything we talk about, I think, from dust to dawn, is all about, how do we bring more jobs to Pasco? With the project of Moffett coming in, that project took a long time to get. We actually delayed Ridge Road about an extra year just to make sure they had the cuts they needed, you know, with Commissioner Simpson helping out with the infrastructure. I mean, that is going to make such a huge difference in the area.
But Jack, we have to make sure that the land around that isn't filled with 40-foot entry-level homes. I mean, we want the doctors to live here and the scientists to live here. So as we are approving these projects, we have to, we have to have opportunities for bigger homes. You know, 40-foot lot, what was the number? I think I heard it in Tallahassee. I think Wilton said it. I think that the price of a home now that adds to the tax base is $350. Isn't that what?
$500.
Oh, $500. Well, there aren't very many $500 40-foot white homes, so.
Not affordable, anyway.
You know, so we do have to balance affordability, but we do have to be careful that we don't swamp ourselves and we leave some land open for people who want to have that bigger home experience.
You want premier places wherever you can get them. And I'll say, as far as, I think, we're taking a great step up and down restoring our canals. From Moffett, if you come down Ridge Road, it's probably about a 15-minute drive. How many people do you know that if they're going to move to Florida, what do they want to do? Go to the beach or do fishing? Go get a boat? We work on these waterways up and down. That access point is coming across real easy for them. That's where they're going to want to live, a lot of them. I mean, there'll be the Wesley Chapel demographics, it's still real strong and popular. The change of what Pasco had gone through, you know, years ago, we had all these retirees from the Midwest coming down, et cetera, they settled in. Well, as they've passed on, new people have come in with not the same demographic. And I will tell you, from a gentleman who had a jewelry store right in front of the Gulfview Mall, he was at one point, almost all the business was right from west Pasco. Slowly, Wesley Chapel grew up and got stronger and stronger. And when they started to get their retail, all of a sudden, the businesses here didn't have that market anymore spending money. They're spending it over there. That's why you see such a big change. So I think the restoration work we're doing, the canals, is going to be a phenomenal help. It's a great start. I think Sun West Park, when we put some assets up to that, a bit more coming up. When we build the other set of boat ramps coming in, create more opportunities. And I will tell you, when, I'm going to Tallahassee tomorrow, and I will have a meeting, Ralph Flair set it up for me, with Fish and Wildlife. And I'm going to be pushing that, treat us the same as Citrus and Rando. Our numbers are the same for scalping. We should be getting the same treatment. And I'm going to be, you know, pushing that issue for us. But definitely, a lot of things we've done have been great. You'll see more and more on the west side. I had just some people from Shady Hills meet with me the other day that came to speak at the MPO, talked with them for probably two hours afterward. They're afraid of too much industrial coming on Shady Hills because the infrastructure there's not there to support it. So we're going to work with them. Matter of fact, that gentleman was now going to be my BPAC member. He was going to go as a CAC alternate, but he says, "Look, I could use on BPAC right now." So he's now going to be coming up for a thing. So we're definitely, I think, doing a lot of great things. And again, zoning, we can't control. Once someone has permission to do whatever fits in the zoning category, they can do whatever fits. We don't control that. We don't see. Like, some people ask me, "What's going on over there?" I'm not sure what's going on over there. Because sometimes you don't know what's coming out of the ground. If the zoning's there, you may, we don't hear about it because it doesn't come before us.
And I think the market also sometimes corrects things. So if you're building a storage facility, which we, you know, did make them go back and have jobs out in the front, if you can't get, if there's too many, you're not going to get a bank loan to build that, you know? So sometimes the financing, if something's overbuilt, sometimes it's hard to get financing. So that helps too.
All right. Commissioner Bradford?
I will say that right now, it's hard to imagine the fundamental effect that Moffett's going to have on Pasco County because it's not built yet. It's hard for people to say, "Okay, there's a field." But I guarantee you, and I think everybody agrees with me, once we get that first building built, that excitement is going to grow. Angeline, as far as I heard, it was 7,000 homes. I've been up there, drove through that with my family, and told her, "No, we're not buying a new house." And so we went all through that area, how the different developers are going to develop that, the high-tech school that's going to be on that property. It's going to drive an economic engine here that none of us have ever seen, which will bleed off into everything that you said, Mr. Chair. Because doctors and radiologists and physician assistants and all that, they've got disposable income.
That's what you need.
And I'll finish with this. In two days, my nurse practitioner's going to be having our grandchild.
Oh.
So I'll be happy about that. She'll be induced, so I'll be number two.
Congratulations.
That's all I have.
All right. And we'll end it here. But Mr. Carbella, if you could, maybe get with our information officers and maybe let them do some digging for us as far as the things we've actually created. Maybe work with David Engel, Bill Cronin, and talk about the jobs we're creating in this area, what's coming up. Because I think it's time for a presentation for that gentleman to hear and to say.
And how can we push that out? You know, if you're not listening to us, how can we get this message out to the public of all the improvements and things, the good works of the county? Yeah, I think we need to have a strategy.
Okay. Very good. All right, let's take a break for lunch. We'll come back at 1:30.
Peace. [music] Excess fertilizer, grass clippings, trash, oils, and pet waste wash into gutters and storm drains when it rains. Stormwater carries these pollutants directly into our lakes and rivers, creating an unhealthy environment for fish, waterfowl, and other aquatic animals. Storm drains are meant for clean rainwater. Most other discharges are illegal. If you suspect an illicit discharge, please contact Pasco County Department of Public Works at 727-834-3611.
Hello, I'm Catherine Seavey, Branch Manager at the Centennial Park Library. We're putting the finishing touches on at your favorite branch. There are lots of changes inside and out, starting in the parking lot. It's been repaved, and new sidewalks and landscaping have been installed. We've also added a bright new sign to keep you informed of events and happenings at the library at a glance. There's a covered entrance now to help you keep dry and in the shade. Inside, the flooring is complete, along with the ceilings and lighting. An expansive new front desk is the hub of the library, with friendly staff ready to assist you quickly and efficiently. The furniture, shelves, and fixtures are in place, and we're preparing to deliver the books to the branch soon. The loft is the new makerspace devoted to studio arts such as painting and arts and crafts. There's plenty of room to conduct classes in the makerspace or to explore your artistic side on your own. We know you're anxious to enjoy the remodeled Centennial Park Library, and we're eager to show it off. Follow our social media pages and pascol libraries.org for updates and the opening date. Thank you.
If you qualify as a special needs client, your emergency go-kit should include